... and lieu of the required building design standards.
All right. So everybody out there in Zoom land, I had them on mute there. I had us on mute. All right, Laura.
This is a variance request located at 709 South Pine Street, formerly known as the Old Buy Mart location. They are asking for a variance request for the commercial design requirements. The site is an improved site with an existing 2,300 square foot retail gas station currently being remodeled. It is located within a special flood hazard areas of A.D. They are asking for this variance request so that they can add on to the backup the facility to construct a new commercial construction for a small restaurant. Any questions? I do believe the applicant is here with us or on the Zoom call here.
Okay, is the applicant for this one either on Zoom or here in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Is most everybody's on mute? No one? All right, last call here. Anybody on Zoom? I see a couple of folks that are on mute. I'm assuming the procedure would be just to table this item. I got a motion to table this one.
Second.
From Commissioner Lowe, second from Commissioner Byrd. Roll call, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater? Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, next item.
709 South Pine Street Landscape variance, variance to allow a reduction in the required landscape requirement.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that does it for Board of Adjustment. We'll shift back over into the Plan Commission meeting. And we will start off with the public hearing. It is 7:08. And we'll start the first one here. Item A, Kim.
3.04 acre tract Bradford rezon request from R1 to R2S Lemons Engineering.
All right, applicant here.
We're here by Zoom.
Okay, all right. I'll start off with Laura first.
This is a rezon request for a property located on Bradford Drive, which is currently a private drive. They are asking for a rezon from R1 to R2S for the lots they are wanting to plant on along Bradford. The difference, they is still a single-family residential request. The only difference between R1 single-family and an R2S medium density density single-family is that in R1, the minimum lot requirement size is 7,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 75 foot and an R2S is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. Also with the request of, at a prior city council meeting, there was residents that requested some traffic counts to be done along North Pole Street. In the packet, there were some traffic counts that were done along North Pole Street. I summed them up because the traffic counts can get a little bit hard to understand. So they did a, the traffic department did a traffic study from March 10th through March 15th, five days straight. They did it westbound and eastbound along North Pole Street in approximately 86 square feet coming in and out. That caused that traffic study that came out on Second Street from North Pole Street.
Okay, is that it? Lauren? Yeah, is this the applicant here? Tim, are you on Zoom?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, basically what we're trying to do here is with all the half-street improvements that we're going to be discussing for success with this later in the meeting, my client's just trying to pick up two more lots. What you have before you on the big screen shows 12 lots. Our plan that we had before you a few months back had 10 lots. That's just helping us kind of absorb some of the cost a little bit. But the lots either meet or in most cases actually exceed the minimum requirements for R2S. So therefore, we would like a favorable okay on this. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, have any questions?
What square footage of the houses are you anticipating in this subdivision?
It's going to be very comparable what you're seeing around town, probably the 1,200 to 1,400 square foot heated and cooled. Very consistent with what's in the neighborhood.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Anybody on Zoom? All right, seeing none, Commissioners? Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion. A motion to approve from Prater of a second. Second, Commissioner Lowe, roll call, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that rezon request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to item B.
Wolf's Bridge at Cabot Area Number One, rezon request from R1 to C2, Joe White and Associates.
Oh, Laura?
We did, this is a rezon. We did the staff report and combined all the staff report into one. So this staff report will be related to all four of these rezons. However, each one of them will likely be voted on separately. Again, this is approximately the 300 to 400 block of Highway 89, just on the south side of town. They are requesting rezoning the property, which is a total of 63 acres in four different sections to from R1 to C2 and then R1 to R4M and then R1 to R2S. This again, this property is 63 acres and it is mostly right now just patch of land. There's a portion of the property that is located in special flood hazard areas of A.D. There is a waterworks comment that I want the commission to be aware of. The applicant is aware of this. And from what I've been told from Paddock Water Works, they are in talks with Grandbury Vine to this property is actually has water runs with Paddock Water Works and Grandbury Vine to both water providers are in talks with an agreement regarding the water and the sewer services as well as fire protection.
All right, so the first one being the R1 to C2, so applicant here to speak. Would you state your name? Commissioners, have any questions?
So there's an overall master development plan, there it is. The whole park is about almost 95 acres. And so it's a, it's a master plan development. When it's built out, we have a, we feel there will be a need for some commercial upfront. We don't see it being a hard commercial. We see it being more of a neighborhood friendly commercial. Maybe a restaurant or a strip mall that maybe has a sandwich shop or something like that. But we see that probably coming after the development is mostly built out. It is a service to be for this area. Yeah. Um, we could get a driveway cut on Highway 89 as well as we could probably get more of our entrance drives.
Laura, how's this match up with our land use map? I think we have a lot of commercial along 89 on south. Does, do we, do we show that in our land use plan?
In our future land use plan, it's slated as low density residential, I believe, for the entire property.
This is, is similar to some of the uses we have around town, such as the entrance into the water park, baseball fields where there's an outline buffer of commercial against a major sort of thoroughfare. Or Lakewood. There's, there's a lot of precedence of this type of arrangement around Cabot and around other communities around central Arkansas. I guess this would be ideally set up for more like a strip mall design where it's glass storefronts facing 89 and utility to the back of it, maybe a service drive. What kind of depth would that yield, Brian? 65-foot deep parking? And then what are you seeing for the retail size, just?
Probably 50 to 60 square feet. We're thinking small neighborhood, not anything heavy used as far as large.
What's the right of way through there? Is it, is it right where the property line is or is there another highway setback right of way line?
Currently, there's an 80-speed total highway right away on Highway 89. The master street plan requires for 90. So when we come in with our plan, we will have to dedicate additional five feet on our side of the road.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Any other questions from Commissioners? Let me go ahead and get to the, any opposing sides. Thank you, Brian. Anyone here to speak against this item? Either here in person or on Zoom? Anyone? All right. Commissioners, it's up to you. Anyone want to make a motion? A motion to approve from Commissioner Prater. Do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Lowe, roll call vote, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that rezon is approved. All right, let's go to item C.
Wolf's Bridge, Wolf's Bridge at Cabot Area Number Two, rezon request from R1 to C2, Joe White and Associates.
So Laura, do you want to go through this one? So you want to make a motion? It's very similar type of location use. Same song. The only difference is we have a, looks like a power line, no pop line easement that cuts through the property. Does that restrict anything in terms of your buildable area is going to avoid that, correct?
Right now, Joe White and Associates, again, you're correct, are pretty high pressure by the S pipeline in that 100 feet. We've requested a copy of the easement for working with the half-street cut. We've been in contact with all three pipelines. They are, obviously we can't put a structure over it, but they are concerned about what we're going to put there. We really see that being a parking lot and maybe even subdivided into two lots in the future. One leaning on a corner and then another down the southeast, separate by the S pipelines.
Okay, that makes sense. Is there anything else that's unique to this one? There's another sort of dash line at the very bottom corner. What, is that an overhead power? All right, thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Anyone here to speak against this one? All right, seeing none, Commissioners? A motion to approve, Commissioner Lowe, do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Prater, roll call vote, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater? Lowe? Young?
Yes. All right, that rezon is approved. So let's go to item D.
Wolf's Bridge at Cabot Area Number Three, rezon request from R1 to R4M, Joe White and Associates.
All right, Laura?
This is a rezon within the bigger portion of the property going from R1 to R4M. They're proposing in their sketch, they're proposing for a multifamily to separate from the R2S, which would then go down to the R, or existing R1 lots, which is the, within the actual development as well.
Okay, so this, the R4 would be buffered by a zone of R2S around the perimeter. Building multifamily apartment units with parking lot around it, green space, and then there's single-family residential around that perimeter.
And they're pretty much a start from the interior of the property and then you step down to the buffer as you get almost the outside of the property.
All right, thanks, Laura. Brian, do you want to speak to this one? Anything that, yeah, anything that we missed or that you want to highlight?
Laura is exactly correct. We're asking for R4 and in the middle of each of those buildings are proposed currently to be 24 acres per building. And they can, in all the building, all amenities that would be a square, there are trails, uh, cooking grills, just all kinds of amenities that everybody could use. And then we've got the parking on the outside with, and the lane around there would be a 50 to 75 foot buffer before the proposed R2S. So it's exactly like what we're saying, we're trying to step down the interior of the zoning until we get back to the property.
So Brian, will there be any type of fencing between that or is it just all open landscape areas between the R4M and R2S?
It would be open so that everybody would be, those are made of the same size, it would not be fenced.
Okay.
It would have trees and vegetation and string.
Is this a gated area or is this an open access from, okay? So the amenities include, there's a, there's a clubhouse, a pool, a dog park, I saw on one corner.
That would be very separate. I mean, if they didn't have our setting, find out what, that maybe we got in support of that there. And the law, they don't, they don't, they, 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 they like the wrong. It can also be for, for everybody, then the residents and single family owners.
Okay, any questions from Commissioners? Even though we're not site planned, but Bobby here, Bobby, no issues from rezoning standpoint? Any other questions?
You said that was a 75-foot buffer or 40-foot buffer around the perimeter of that, of R4M to R2S?
Currently on the west, we have a buffer shown there, and on the south from the north, that's 75 feet shown. We get into the design, this luxury was, the goal is to maintain at least 50 feet everywhere. If we can get the 50 on the west of the 75, we'll do that as well.
Yeah, it's a nice concept with the green space in the middle and a communal kind of atmosphere, a good amenity for residents of single family and the multifamily. So I know this is state highway, but there's not any improvements, street improvements required, any type of that from?
That would be, that would be during the site as well, but in my opinion, it's not slated for any of this.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, thanks, Brian. Anybody here to speak against this item? Anybody on Zoom or? All right, Commissioners? A motion to approve from Commissioner Prater. Do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Lowe, roll call vote, please.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that rezon is approved. We'll go to the next one, item E.
Wolf's Bridge at Cabot Area Number Four, rezon request from R1 to R2S, Joe White and Associates. Wolf's Bridge at Cabot, area number four, rezon request from R1 to R2S, Joe White Associates.
Anything Laura to add to this portion? All right. Brian, anything you want to add to the residential portion of it? And the road is planned to go around the perimeter, right? Is that setting itself up for future developments adjacent to this on either side and so?
We can work with staff, and we are tying into the residential development for the car. We are studying the streets out, studying two streets out on the south, finding future developments for connectivity there as well. And they're just kind of a little bit off on that, but we are planning.
So it ties into Autumn Brook on the north side, right?
So this property actually does touch Autumn Brook in two streets that are currently built for Autumn Brook. They do have streets that would connect to those. We also you have two streets shown that would connect to the south property lots, fourteen to develop it down there as well. And there's actually a third connection in the northwest corner of this property that would actually connect to Kendall.
So the lots that are just south of the drive, it's on the south side of the property, are not a part of this rezone request, correct?
Correct. The perimeter lots are currently all like this, they're keeping those finer lots as well.
Now, see the portion of the R1 that's in that floodway, the plan for that is to let that be detention or green field, or what's the use for that?
You're correct. We're on the side of the green space, and then some of it will be this one. Fine, it's actually working through the, or for the, that will be for, if you had, if you had, that would be restricted.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian. Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone on Zoom? All right, commissioners, entertain a motion to approve? A motion from Commissioner Lowe, second from Commissioner Bird, roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that rezone is approved. Thank you. All right, we'll go to the next item.
Lot forty four, original town of Cabot, First Baptist Church, proposed alley closure.
Laura?
This, there's actually three of these on the agenda. Each one is in a different block. This first one is in block forty four, the original town of Cabot. This property is all, each one of these blocks are all owned by First Baptist Church. They're requesting to close the alleys that are within these blocks so that they can have future growth development. They are proposing, and that item on this agenda is a replat for one of these blocks. They have been asked, and they do replat each block. Since these alleys are being proposed to close, or closed, there are utilities within these utility, within these alleys. And they're proposing those alleys to just be turned into utility easements, maintaining those utility spaces. So there is, I believe, as you can hear, we're here, if anybody has any questions, you're representing First Baptist Church on any of these three. I assume you have any questions.
All right, thanks, Laura. Yes, sir.
Here, you're welcome, representing First Baptist Church. Any questions from the commission?
Anyone? Guess not. Yeah, thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak against this? All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions, commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to approve? A motion, Prater?
Second.
Second from Bird, roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, next item, do we need to go ahead and? I don't think there's anything to talk about.
This is to block forty four, the same exact thing, just another, just a different section.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this one. A motion and a second, a roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. And for the last item, Adam H. I get a motion to approve? A motion to approve? And a second, a roll call, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, is that okay, Ben? We kind of flew through those pretty fast, but all right, make sure we are staying out of trouble. So thank you, Gary. Appreciate you being here. Next item on the agenda?
Eight oh one, West Main Street, Suite Four, reduction in parking spaces for its own part.
Laura?
This is, the applicant is here tonight. She is renting a space located eight oh one, West Main Street, Suite, Suite Four, which is next to the old price cutter building on Main Street. The applicant is wanting to rent this space for a parking rental space and a party venue, I do believe. She is asking for a reduction in the parking space requirement per home that she is required to have. According to our, the UDC with our off-street parking, the planning commission may alter the number of parking spaces required for any building for any use. This is why she is here tonight for this. With what she is proposing to do for the proposed event center and the party rental space, the way that the parking is calculated, she would be required to have twenty three parking spaces for this proposed event center. Right now, there are currently only eighteen spaces for this group center that this business is being proposed at. She has approached the city to have shared off-street parking agreement with the city. However, with that parking, shared parking agreement, can only have thirty percent off-site. So that is why the applicant is here tonight to ask the commission for a reduction in their required parking spaces for the facility so that she can still have the facility there and have enough onsite spaces that meets code. Still have a shared parking agreement with the city as well, but the off-site parking cannot be more than thirty percent. So she's proposing to reduce the parking down from twenty three to fifteen required. So that way she would have enough onsite spaces in order to do the shared parking agreement. I know it sounds confusing, I hope I explain it the best, so then I can leave it up to the applicant to do the rest.
Okay, is it Naomi or Wendy? So you're taking the, that retail center, and there's twenty three required spaces, but that is a, that's a parking lot that's got a whole lot more spaces.
I want to consider only owns the property with the parking spaces directly in front of it. The other parking spaces are owned, we are going to consider off-site because they're owned by the city, which owns the old price cutter. When I counted, there's a hundred and fifty total spaces, believe it or not, in that little area. Around the buildings, there's eighteen directly in front of our building. And that's why I looked to the mayor and asked him, is there any chance that we can have some shared parking there to be able to have our event center? We need a small venue here in the city of Cabot. It just currently doesn't exist. And so that's what we were actually doing and having, as far as renting tables, chairs, linens, backdrops, things like that for regular day-to-day business, but we would also be available for parties, weddings.
Are you Naomi or Wendy?
I'm Naomi Brett, and I'm so sorry, and this is my sister, lovely, the water.
Okay.
We are a woman and veteran of business.
Okay, that's awesome. Are you planning on taking that entire center, the whole, or just a portion of it?
No, just Suite Four.
Suite Four, okay.
Just Suite Four. Right, and with the changes that we've proposed, adding a restroom so that we can be an event center with the ADA required restroom, we're willing to add that. And we, we've been waiting with a jackhammer for three weeks now to start working on it.
How many square feet are in Suite Four?
A little over fourteen hundred.
And, and this will be, it'll be used as an event center there at that Suite Four?
At that location.
And, and what's your capacity for entertaining?
Approximate, because Mr. Heffron has not had a chance to actually come in yet, but according to our drawings and things, he said approximately sixty six.
That's a lot of people.
How many other spaces are in that strip?
I believe there are four suites in that strip.
And they all share that parking in the front?
Correct.
So if we, if there's eighteen spaces in the front and we cut it down to fifteen, that only allows three or four other leases, leases, correct? That's not off-site.
The events that we're proposing having would mainly be on Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening at a time when Sandy's Rivers, which is right next door, they close, they are half-day only. They would actually be closed well before we would have an event as well as the seller accessory superstore closes relatively early on Saturday as well. And then N and L is a barber salon, air salon.
And Laura, help me understand the number of required spaces was based on square footage, the fourteen hundred square feet?
I'm going to have to help me on that one.
Is it?
The, the number of parking spaces that were required is based off the, it's going to be proposed as an event center, so it's going to be rated at a, at a higher. It's based on their ultimate load, sorry. So their ultimate load, I believe, was sixty seven. And then you take that and you find about three, and that's how many parking spaces are required for an event center. So that's where we came up with the twenty three spaces.
And your hours of operation will only be weekends and evenings or what?
We'll be open Monday through Friday, and then Saturdays as well. Or if a person wants to come in and wants to schedule a wedding, wants to sit down and talk about four inch linens, what you have, things along that, just a regular business, nine to five, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday mornings. And the events would be on Friday evening, and most of the other businesses close at about five or six o'clock. So the events would be then in the evening on Friday evening, Saturday night afternoon, and then possibly Sunday when everyone's closed.
I see.
Are you enforcing those times on those events, or could they be at other times during the week?
You mean, yeah, in the evenings, but not during the day? It's certainly not our intention to interfere with anybody else's business, or being able to have the best solution in that as being.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions for Wendy or Naomi? All right, thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone here to speak against this item? Anybody on Zoom speak against this? All right, I'll start with my thoughts. I'm seeing a trend across a lot of municipalities of parking lot reductions to in, in most of the cities, we see this is to encourage more biking and walking and, you know, less vehicular, more walkable communities. I think with the availability of parking in this open area, even with the development of the, the old price cutter building, that there's still a lot of capacity for cars in this parking lot in this area of, of overlap. I mean, I, I see the overlap is working well for Friday nights and the Saturday and Sundays, you know, where it's just business hours, small number of people, but the majority of cars coming in on the weekends may be the, helping with the overall need for parking spaces. So I, I don't see any issues with granting that variance or rezoning.
It's not a variance or any way, you know, per se, it's just a redemption. No, what do you see? This does not have to be a variance or a waiver. This is something that the commission can correct.
Yes. A motion to approve from Commissioner Lowe. Do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Prater, roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. That reduction is approved. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven forty-five and move on to plan and commission new business. And Tim, you would?
Replat, lot one, R, lot forty four, bonded.
Laura?
This is a replat of lot one, R, forty four. This is one of the blocks that we were discussing, the alley closure. This piece of property is, right now, twelve flooded lots, record lots one through twelve, lot forty four, the original town of Cabot. They're proposing to combine it into one lot. From twelve lots down to one lot. Again, First Baptist Church owns this, it's surrounded all by, from Third Street, Fourth Street, and then from West Olive Street to Locust Street. The, the engineer that submitted this did meet old staff requirements. However, this replat cannot be reported until the ordinance information is added to it when the alley closure goes before the city council, the city council approves it, and then they add the ordinance information to this plan before they can report it. That's the outstanding item in that staff.
All right, thanks, Laura. Anything that bond engineering wants to add to this? Anybody here? Okay, commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve in a second, a roll call, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that replat is approved. Let's go to the next item.
Final class, Autumn Brook, lot sixteen through twenty one, forty one, fifty eight, and sixty four. Final flat, Autumn Brook, lot sixteen through twenty-one, forty-one, fifty-eight, and sixty-four, Linens Engineering.
Laura?
This is a final flat in Autumn Brook for the lots that Kim just said that are for non-family, these are present lots located still within the Autumn Brook, Autumn Brook subdivision. There is only one outstanding comment that staff has. Staff is willing to work with the developer, the fire department is willing to work with the developer since this developer is substantially building these houses just as quick as she can sell the lots, these houses will be in sale. So that hence why they're needing this final plat. They have worked with the fire department to do a temporary access road since they're going to be above thirty lots. They're going to build a temporary access road from the current street that's already, Chestnut Drive, that is already built out to Highway eighty-nine to have that second egress into the development. Again, it's just a temporary road so that they build on these nine lots. They do need to add a, at the gate, there will need to be an approved block on both ends of the temporary access road to prevent any contractors or anybody just parking on that temporary road. It's meant for a fire apparatus, temporary road, not for somebody just to park on. That's the only comment that staff has that needs to be addressed.
All right, Bobby, is there anything that you want to add to the temporary road or fire department access?
The only comment I had was, we added the temporary road drawing that we asked for, the house end, not the highway end, the house end didn't show that second, as long as they're willing to have that second gate to be approved block. So we can keep the contractors from parking on it. We can use that as a second entrance until they get the rest of the infrastructure and streets completed, once they get those completed and packed, and they can make the temporary road.
So that secondary gate is the one out at eighty-nine, correct? Or is it the one that's inbound?
The, well, the road goes from eighty-nine into, I can't see what lot number that is or what that next grid is, but
Chestnut?
The temporary road that he showed had the gate and block at eighty-nine side, at the highway side, but it didn't show it at the street side or the house side.
Where Chestnut is?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
I just feel that if we didn't have this gate at both ends, it would turn into a park.
Okay. I'm assuming it's going to have to be built to your standards for supporting your trucks as well, yeah. All right, Tim, is there anything that you want to add to this item?
No, I'm glad we, I'm glad Bobby clarified that because we show the gate out on eighty-nine. But I do not have a gate at the end of Chestnut. And if I'm hearing correctly, we need to put a gate on Chestnut as well.
Yeah, Tim, the conversation that you and I had about this temporary road as, as a design. I think the final on it was because if we didn't put a gate at both ends, it would, it would turn into a parking lot for contractors who wanted to, you know, park closer to that gate.
Lay down space. We lay down space.
Well, we have no problem adding the second gate, I've just, I didn't realize that was needed, it would have been shown on the plans, but we glad to add it.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion to approve with the inclusion of staff comments as well as the gated secondary access.
Make that motion.
All right, got a motion including those contingencies from Commissioner Prater, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bird, roll call please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, that final plat for Autumn Brook is approved. Item C?
Final flat, Standard Oil Company, seven oh nine South High, both consulting engineers.
Laura? This is the one we tabled earlier, is, can we even vote on this or we? All right, we got a motion to table final plat.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Bird, roll call please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater? Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, next item, item D?
Bike Plan, seven oh nine South High Street, both consulting engineers.
You have a motion to table, got a motion from Commissioner Lowe.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bird, roll call please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, item E?
Preliminary flat, Hayden Place, Linens Engineering.
Laura?
Okay, this is a preliminary plat for development that's located on Bradford Drive, Oak Street, and Womack Drive. This is a previous, plan that y'all, that y'all had seen before, but as in the previous, or in the agenda items previously, the rezon for the lots along Bradford Drive were approved. So since they were approved, they were, they were refiling this property to accommodate for that rezon. So the lots along Bradford Drive are proposed for the R two S. And then the rest of the lots in the subdivision would remain as oil one development. There are several outstanding items that the applicant did not address with the revisions. Some of the items were outstanding comments from the previous preliminary plats approved, including half-street improvements along North Oak Street. Bradford Drive needs to be, is currently a private street, it needs to be brought up to city standards, which means it has to be white and sidewalks need to be extended from North Oak Street all the way to the end of Bradford Drive on both sides of the street. There's a horizontal sideline curb issue, oh, Christian Lane hasn't been addressed. There's still some drainage report issues that have to be worked out as well. So there are still several outstanding items within this replat.
All right, Tim, do you want to address any of these items at this time?
Yes, I would. A lot of these items kind of are repetitious. I know the, the list looks long, but actually I believe a lot of these could be easily taken care of. Some of these I wanted to discuss with the planning commission tonight. First, let's talk about the half-street improvements on North Oak Street. I, I really would like, if I could, to discuss this with my client to see if, if he would like to request a waiver for this. So I guess what we would need to do is to approve this with the half-street improvements on Oak Street. And then if he decides he wants to come back with a waiver, we could. I haven't had a chance to discuss that with him since receiving staff comments. So there's that issue. On the half-street improvements on Womack, if you remember, when we looked at this before, we waived the half-street improvements on Womack. We did not waive the sidewalks, but because of the, the location of this, and there's no curb anywhere into the Crestwood subdivision, which has quite a few houses on to the west of here. The planning commission was gracious enough to give us that waiver. So we would think that the waiver would stand up in this case as well. So I think that kind of takes care of that. As far as bringing Bradford up to city specs, that is our intention. I did not show a sidewalk on the gap between lots two and three. But now that my client now owns enough room in there to build the street up, we will add that sidewalk between lots two and three. It will be part of the initial construction. Since they don't own the land behind it, they need to put that in on the front end with the curb and gutter so we won't have a gap. There's some other small issues like the bill of assurance. I now do apologize in my comment back to staff, I said, we're going to use the same bill of assurance we had before. However, the lot numbers have changed. I will be glad to make that adjustment as well. That's a five-minute word document exercise. Really, the only thing that I have any real issue with is they're at that curve where Christian Lane turns from going westerly to going southerly. We were trying to avoid that existing structure, that is, there are lot number sixteen, the house. And by pulling the building line into where we wouldn't have to wait, ask for a, a variance on that setback by creating this street, we ended up shortening that radius from seven, seventy-five foot radius down to seventy-two. To me, it's a minor thing to, a minor request. And if we need to ask in form of a waiver at the present time, we will. It's not going to, going to seventy-five feet is not going to increase the site distance enough to matter. And truthfully, we have streets a lot shorter than that throughout the city. So we'd like to leave that at seventy-two. And then the only other items is on the drainage report. I do need to show counters on the detention pond. And I was going to get with Brian Vines about this before tonight's meeting, but truthfully, time got away from us, and I know Brian's like me, he's been extremely busy of late. So I'd like to get that information to him and get his approval and make that a contention to the approval of this preliminary plat.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Laura, on the Womack or Womack half-street waiver, did we feel waiver adjacent to that?
The requirements on Womack were to afford the sidewalks to be installed, not any curbing or with their drainage improvements would have to be done along Womack on this property if it's being necessary. But when they submitted the plans, there was no sidewalk shown along Womack or any drainage improvements for any anything along Womack. But curbing gutter, we would not require that since there is not any curbing gutter. It would just be a little strip of probably about a hundred and seventy-five feet or a hundred and fifty feet of curbing gutter just in the middle of the section.
Did we give a waiver of that area previously?
I would honestly have to go back through the minutes in the previous meeting on Womack to see if that was something that was.
I, I do remember very well, you did give a waiver on that. We didn't waiver the sidewalks, but the curb and gutter, we did waiver. And there's really not any drainage improvements there because where we're coming out on the Womack, it's the top of the hill. The ground falls back to the east and to the west from our drive, so there's no drainage improvements to be done there.
Then on the seventy-five foot radius variance, Laura, can you give us a little bit of clarity on that? About giving some type of leniency on that?
Do you see it states that in Long Street, the radius is supposed to be seventy-five foot on the, so on? There was no request for a waiver. The only thing about waivers is just like a variance, they're supposed to be advertised.
It's, it's not anything we could approve in this meeting?
Not waivers because there was no advertising of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if, to keep this thing from having to come back, if changing that to a seventy-five foot radius would require a waiver that has to be advertised, we'll change it to seventy-five feet. We don't want to do a waiver over something that is significant, you know?
Okay. And then the last two comments, the questions I had, detention, Brian, you said y'all have looked at, or you need to look at the detention?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
We had comments on the grant report.
What, what is the, what is the plan for detention? I don't see a detention pond or anything.
There's, if I could, there's a spot there in the southeast corner of lot thirteen, you see the triangle?
Yes, okay.
That's, that's the area that we are using for detention. And there is a cover that goes from that to a catch basin that we're putting on the north side of Christian Lane in that radius. That will be where our discharge would occur. And if you remember, we put in a concrete swell that's going to run at the back of lots five through twelve. Then turn and go due south and come down to our detention area. That was added during the previous submittal. Lot numbers have changed, but the concrete swell remains.
All right, I do recall, all right, thanks, Brian. And then fire department, Bobby, is there anything else you want to add to, is there anything comments wise? All right, commissioners, any other questions? They will make a motion to approve with the contingencies?
There are no waivers?
Yeah, there's a whole list of waivers. Or a whole list of contingency items based on the staff report. We're not doing waivers. Yeah, we're not doing any waivers, it would have to be built to seventy-five feet, not to seventy-two. It just had to be the, based on the contingencies of the staff report. Yeah, I don't have any record of if we approved the last, or gave a waiver or something for that half-street improvement on Womack. I got a motion to approve with all the city's staff comments in place, do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Prater, roll call vote please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so preliminary plat is approved, we'll go on to the next preliminary plat, item S?
Preliminary flat, Riverside Homes, Linens Engineering.
Laura?
This is a preliminary plat request located in twenty-eight, twenty-one, Highway three sixty-seven South, or also on South Second Street. This preliminary plat was submitted with the revisions of the site plan, which will appear after this item. However, since it was not submitted at the original submittal time with the site plan, staff was, did not have ample time to review this plat for any outstanding items. So that is why there are not any, any items in the staff report. We just put a quick staff report together for this preliminary plat. Staff would like to review this preliminary plat for any items that are not on the plat. I don't think the applicant has any issues with that. I just want them to be aware that staff is not reviewing preliminary plats.
Mr. Chair, we, we have no problem with addressing any staff comments that may arise after tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Commissioners? I entertain a motion to approve with the staff comments to follow. Motion from Commissioner Prater, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bird, roll call please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes. All right, preliminary plat was approved, is that a grimace, Commissioner Lowe? Let's go to the next item and see if we can get this one.
Site plan, Riverside Town Homes, Linens Engineering. Limousine Engineering.
Laura?
This is a site plan for the same property located twenty-eight, twenty-one, Highway three sixty-seven. They are proposing a site plan approval for a multifamily development with a total of twenty-four units and forty-eight parking spaces. This property is located within a special flood hazard area zone A E D M, floodway as well. For high-risk flood zoning according to the available base level engineering data on this property. There are a few outstanding items. The main concern with staff is the sidewalks along Highway three sixty-seven. And then. That was, I guess, the main one that staff had some issues with. There are still some other outstanding items, but. Other than that. Those are the items have been addressed. There are just, again, just some outstanding, some items that I believe that staff.
And if I could, I'm sorry, Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
And I'd like to talk to you about the sidewalk along three sixty-seven. My client has no problem putting the sidewalk as shown on the plan. And it would tie in very nicely with the sidewalk that we have going in front of the townhouse. If you go very much further to the east, you fall off into a very large watershed. And this has got a bridge that's underneath Highway three sixty-seven. Truthfully, the best time to put sidewalks there would be if someday that bridge is replaced and widened to add sidewalks. I don't, I don't know of any other way you could get a sidewalk across this property to to the east. It's just one of those situations there where we have floodway, we have a large drainage structure that's underneath three sixty-seven. And I think this is a really good termination point where we've got it shown right now until something can be done. When I say by done, you know, when Highway three sixty-seven is improved. When that bridge is replaced, that would be the time to tie these sidewalks together.
Yeah, Laura, that that sidewalk, I mean, it's gotta be there, right? I mean, based on U D C requirements. There's no negotiating that.
Is that something that we would have to take to the city council to request?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, if if you say we have to have a sidewalk across the front, that's fine, but. You know, it's gonna end in White White Oak Branch, which is a major tributary to the city of Cabot. If we have to show it across the front, we will, but I'm quite sure that my client's gonna want to go to the city council, see if we can get a waiver in this situation.
Yeah, he can he can take it to the city council. There may be a future phase where the city may get a grant to build a. Bridge or culvert or something across there and connect it, so. Just keep doing what we're required to do by the U D Cs.
And and I I respect that. Well, we'll do what we gotta do with the city council then for the time being.
Any other questions from the commission? Is there any requirements for the east side of that that's adjacent to R one? Any fencing screening? I mean, that's gonna be required on the. West side of that property.
I don't believe that Seren has any residential. Are you talking about where it's. A bunch against a commercial property behind the two townhome?
Yeah, it says zoned R one with existing commercial on it.
And Mister Chair. We we may have been looking at an old zoning map. So therefore, that may very well be commercial. I know it's been commercial use for many years. It's a cabinet shop and. Manufacturing facility, so I but that's what the zoning map that we found on the city's webpage showed that is R one. So that's what we showed, but you know, I found out earlier today, there's another. Possible fallacy on our zoning map on another piece of property. The city's webpage shows that property as being one zoning when I called Kim today to find out that it's actually been rezoned. The map just hadn't been updated. But that property to the west is definitely commercial use. As with the property to the south.
All right, Bobby, is there any items access regress you guys need to address or? Yes, sir. Okay. Commissioners, have any other questions? Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Lo, have a second. Second, Commissioner Prater, roll call, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Adam H., site plan.
Site plan lot one Dixieland, Limousine Engineering.
Laura?
This is a site plan for lot one Dixieland, located at four fifty-four, Deers Lane. They are requesting a site plan approval for an after-school childcare facility. Located in the existing building on the site. The bill approves that the preliminary plat has already been approved for this site. They do have a special use permit to allow for an after-school care child center within this O one district. There are a few major outstanding items on this piece of property. The number one major item being from the Water Works Department. Saying that the Arkansas Department of Health has notified them that cattle waterworks is prohibited from providing water service to. Any building on this site without an approved sewer disposal system. They propose one option to install a riper pump and connect to the existing sewer behind the land. Of course, the applicant would have to obtain an easement to cross in property with the sewer force name. There's also a few outstanding items within the planning staff report of the parking calculations. As well as. A buffer between the existing building and the residential neighborhood behind it. And then the sidewalks along Deers Lane need to be located in the current location. And then in the drainage report, there were some calculations that needed to be recalculated as well.
Laura, what location the sidewalk, does it need to be on the backside of the property line?
The sidewalk is to be adjacent to the right away. I think they've got a gap between the sidewalk and where it's currently, where they have shown, it's supposed to be adjacent to the right away.
So shifted west a few feet.
Right.
Okay.
Tim, do you have any comments?
Yeah, let's talk about the sidewalk at first. If we need to move the sidewalk to the west, that's not a problem. But we keep, first things first, we had showed, I believe, a twenty-five foot right-of-way dedication. And then we were told that had to be a thirty-foot right-of-way dedication on Diedrich. So that shifted the property line back to the west, five feet further. And I believe that's where that gap is shown. Our problem is is we have, you know, we had to have a ten-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and beginning of our parking lot. If we start shifting everything further back to the west, it's gonna narrow those lanes down a little bit, thus. Creating a possible maneuverability problem, so. We're hoping that we can just leave the sidewalks where we haven't shown. Normally, when we're looking at sidewalks, we're looking at a twenty-five foot right-of-way dedication. This is a little bit unusual because it's thirty feet. And I'd like to get the city's thoughts on that.
Laura, do you see any issues with that? Because I'd rather I'd be in favor of the ten-foot landscape buffer there in lieu of shifting the sidewalk.
The only issue is that that sidewalk is not. Adjacent to the right-of-way. If the city ever goes in and widens that road, the city would have to move the sidewalk. Granted, if we take the entire right-of-way to widen that street. However, in our master street plan, the sidewalks are supposed to be like made parallel to the right-of-way.
Is that a variance or is that a? Within this approval?
Technically, it would have to be a way.
All right. I guess that solves that issue. Any other comments, Tim, you want to go through?
Uh, yeah, let's talk about the sewer. I did not have a chance. I I got a copy of that same email from Glen. Glenn Greenway, say that five times real fast, and at the health department and. What he was speaking was the the state's policy that you can't set a water meter until you have an approved septic system. Well, I'm not so sure we don't have an approved septic system. The problem is that septic system was put in when the structure was originally built. About thirty years ago. So therefore, we've been looking for the paperwork on that original septic system to no avail. So, you know, I feel like that if we could ever find a copy of that that approved septic system, that that issue would be resolved. If that is not the case, then my client would have to connect to sewer. Yes, we could get to Mark Lynn. Another possibility would be across the street of Blooming Ridge. You know, there's sewer right across the street of Blooming Ridge, but. I guess while we would, if we could get a contention approval with us being able to work out the issue. Whether we have an approved septic system or connecting to the sewer at Blooming Ridge. Now, as far as, as far as the parking, the issue of the parking was brought up. This is a very similar facility to what they presently own. They own several of them. And the parking that we have shown are this very small site with all the landscaping and everything that we have to do. There's just not much room for parking. I think the difference of opinion is based on the inhabitants. The people that will be inside the building. In this case, it will be kids. It's an after-school. Facility just for a few hours a day. Comparing that to similar organizations, facilities that these people own. They claim that that parking is more than adequate because a lot of the parents just drive up there under the canopy and pick up their kids and. Go on to the house. So we do have quite a bit of stacking room in the parking lot area to accommodate more than just the parking spots that are there.
Because based on the U D C, it's one parking space for every ten.
It's one parking space per employee in one space for every ten persons in care.
Persons.
Persons in care does take into account children.
How many, do you know how many employees we have, Tim?
I'm thinking there's two, two employees.
There's gotta be more than that.
I think there's only gonna be.
You'll have, I think, state health is one caregiver per thirty-five kids or something like that. It's.
I don't believe there's gonna be more than about, I'm.
Or is that, or maybe twelve?
Let me pull my site plan up just just a second, please.
Chairman on the site plan, he does lose four employees, but doesn't tell us how many persons are in care.
Okay, you're right. There are four employees. My bad.
There's state, there's state guidelines for how many workers can have so many kids. I mean, it's a it's a ratio. I don't know what those are without pulling up my health department, but. Chief or Bobby, do you know what the guideline is for? Daycare facilities, number of kids per worker? Yes, it'll be forty-eight, max.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Bobby. What did he say about the ratio?
He said it was one, either one to ten or one to twelve.
Okay, one of these employees may be administrative, so it might just be three workers. So I don't know what that does to our equation, but if we had three workers, what would be the potential? Is it one for, you said one for twelve?
Yes.
Well, that would be thirty-six. So what what is the?
What's what's that? Okay. Fifteen to one, okay. Yeah, you know what ages this is? Tim, is this after-school care? Is this daycare infant?
It's after-school, so it would be ages. Five to probably twelve in that range.
Special use, that was right, it was for after-school care program.
Okay.
Is that, what what was that ratio that we decided on?
They're looking it up. Yeah, maybe that's only for daycare, health department guidelines, after-school.
Ten years of that goes to twenty-one, but you can't necessarily go off of. Just that number. You also have to look at the size of the room that they have. Because just because one person could have twenty people. Classroom that they have, bigger dock of over the classroom, or that teacher could possibly only have five to six kids in that classroom. So we can't just go by how many they could have, is what we're actually licensed for in the size of room.
Yes, Tim, we've got a lot of holes in this one that we just don't understand what we're approving here.
What have you guys want to do? If you if you want to table it, I'm not suggesting that, but maybe I can come back with some better answers next month.
It would be great to come back with some solid answers on how many kids, how many, you know, folks are working here. See if you can solve the issue with the water and the sewer line. Sewer service. Yes, sidewalk location, that may have to be a variance request, which. I don't think that'd be a big deal to give a variance for that, but it'd have to be official variance request. I'd be. More supportive of getting landscape there.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I've got one. My recommendation would be to have the owner of the H S find out for their square footage. what they're gonna license them for, for each room, and get a total license on that from the DHS and the government.
Did you hear that, Tim?
No, couldn't hear it, sorry.
He recommended getting together with DHS and getting an understanding on what they will be licensed for.
Okay.
Anything else?
We don't know how many, we don't know how many rooms this building's gonna have, so there's no way we make a determination.
Actually, I, I believe that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that they have applied for a remodeling permit. So I believe the city might have the footprint on this already. And I, I may be wrong, but I, I believe they do. I, I don't know. I was told they do.
Laura says they do not. They do not.
I'll, I'll get with the owner.
Okay, well, I, I think it'd be best to probably table this and get a little bit more of this sorted out so we can make a good decision.
No problem.
Got a motion to table from Commissioner Bird, a second. Commissioner Prater, second, roll call, please.
First, yes. Prater.
Yes.
Lowe.
Yes.
Young.
Yes. All right, that item is tabled. I must add him on the agenda.
Site plan lot 1, Dragon Edition, Women's Engineering.
Laura?
This is a site plan for a lot located at 1120 West Main Street. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval for an auto repair business. At a previous meeting, y'all have already approved a platform, this property, as well as a variance for the existing building to encroach on the north setback. There are two existing buildings on this piece of property, as well as a bay. They are proposing to take the bay and enclose it. They are gonna shorten the existing bay so that they can use as much of the existing structure as possible. There are still some outstanding items on this, this item as well. Staff has concerns that the streetscape that is being done, were being proposed by the city is not gonna address the drainage along. The West Main needs to be enclosed to meet six streets, or the, sorry, the Main Street, streetscape lane. Those are the main ones. Many outstanding items, and we have all the other items or minor items that I believe can be addressed.
Laura, help me understand the, how the Main Street plan overlay onto this property would, would look. What would, what would that look like?
The, there would be sidewalks from the property to the, I'm very interested on this. I believe this is the east of this property or southeast is where Freddys is going. The sidewalk will connect from Freddys, will walk the, along 89 or along Main Street. The sidewalk will be parallel to the property line, and then it will pick up on the opposite side, which is the gas station, the flare-up station on the other side. And the sidewalks will continue, there will also be streetlights located along this corridor as well. So the way that he, Mr. Lemons has this painted sidewalk shown would not meet the streetscape design that we have normally in the middle of, made that designed either.
Mr. Chair, I think really the only main, like what Ms. Laura said, the only main issue here is the compliance with the streetscape along 89. What we have proposed here is something that is very simplistic. It accommodates the ingress and egress. We have two driveways. We're not looking at doing away with either one of those. Oh, and in fact, our latest plan does show that we are tying the two culvers together and doing away with that unsightly ditch that is between the driveways. It's kinda hard to see, but two questions are, first of all, I think the, isn't the city going to be engaging contractor to do the streetscape in this area in the reals in the near future?
Still waiting on R dot for that. So at this time, it would be the developers' expense to install it.
Now, if that's the case, then I'm sure my client would be more than willing to do that. But we were thinking that if you were in fact going to be doing that while we were constructing what we're constructing, then, you know, the two could work together and come to some agreement. So, you know, but I'm not sure what the timeline is. I, I couldn't hear Laura then. I don't know what the timeline is on letting the contract for that streetscape part.
Yeah, she said they're waiting on R dot.
Well, that could be next week, next, next decade, one or the other.
That's right.
Two I will do, we, we, we would like to keep as much asphalt. If you'll notice, the landscape that we're proposing in front of the building, I've got a 15-foot landscape area there that we would like to keep as much of that as possible. But we still want maneuverability for people to get around the building on both sides. I mean, from a fire standpoint and for maneuverability for the clients or the customers. We can expand that middle island off of 89 to make it more compliant with our streetscape plan. But we would still like to keep as much of that landscaping and that driveway lane as possible. We could lower that driveline down to 15 feet, giving us five more feet to, that would help us kinda line everything up a little bit better. That's something we're glad to work with staff if, if that's what we need to do. Just if we can make that a contingency to the approval, because I think that's the biggest item that's left.
That sounds reasonable to me. You see any issues with that, Laura? No, he's, so he's, there's a 15-foot landscape buffer in front of the building, adjacent to that drive. It's 20 feet wide. And then there's the sidewalk. And what he's proposing is to make the front area along Main Street, the landscape area a little bit bigger and align the sidewalk with the other sidewalks. So kinda push that back a little bit, narrow up the landscape in front of the building, but to increase and enhance the center island and reduce the access aisle to 15 feet from 20 feet.
Wanting to push the sidewalk into the property?
Is that, that's what I was understanding.
No, I'm sorry, push, push the island into the property and line our sidewalks and, and do our sidewalks where we are compliant with the streetscape plan. Based on what I'm saying, we'll comply with the streetscape plan. But, you know, as long as, if we can reduce that, that driveline between the sidewalk and the landscape down to 15 feet, and maybe we could reduce our landscape down to 10 feet and give us 10-foot more flexibility in the front, I think we could, we could meet that landscape plan that's, that we're talking about. I mean, the streetscape plan. So we'd be willing to, with contingency approval, work with the city to make that happen.
Sound good to you guys? The other thing else that came up last time, this came before us, was the parking count. Seemed like we were very short on parking. Was that given a reduction?
No, actually, we took out the storage containers that we were proposing in the back, and we added parking back there.
I mean, I'm, I'm really glad to see the redevelopment of this, you know, property. I just don't wanna have a parking issue and have these cars parked all over the place, you know, along Main Street.
Well, there's, with the two existing buildings, there's really not much we can do as far as parking. We do have a total of, including the handicap spot, we got a total. We've increased the parking two spaces by taking out the shipping containers. I don't know what else we could do. Most of the traffic in are gonna be people dropping off their vehicle, you have it serviced, and then coming back to get it. So, you know, you have to take into account that these bays will hold, I think it's four bays, and they will hold, I think it's wide enough to hold up to two cars in each bay. So that might make it look a little bit more attractive by having eight ready-built parking spots inside the building. Plus, we have, I think, 12 or 13, so we have up to 20, 21 parking spots available.
Have you ever seen, driven by Eads or driven by Red River Ford, or, I mean, there's, yeah.
I think, I, I think Red River Ford, I think Red River Ford does a great job for their parking. We're trying to be like them.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's not here. They park him in the back. Seriously, Laura, is the parking on any, the comments for staff? They made parking requirements, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Any other, are there any other staff? All right, got a motion to approve with staff requirements and Commissioner Lowe, a second. A second, Commissioner Bird, a roll call, please.
First, yes. Prater. Lowe.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing me to zoom.
All right, thank you. All right, last item, community input. Anyone here who survived our evening, wanna offer up any input? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all favor say ah. We are adjourned, see you guys next month, thank you.